Good morning, everybody. It is eleven o'clock. I call to order the Saline County Commission Public Forum and Meeting for July twelfth, two thousand and six to order. I would ask everybody to stand and join me in a flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move next to the roll call.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Guyle.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And I know Commissioner Smith is absent at this time.
Move next to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time?
Good morning, Commissioners.
For what?
We're at two thirty-five North Santa Fe. Today, I'd like to talk about the wages for Commissioners and the unequal pay of some of the members. I believe that during the campaign, political campaign, that some had mentioned they were going to donate or give back their compensation. And I would like to verify and the three people that I know that are, were the ones that received less pay or were going to donate were Chairman Shadwick, Commissioner Larson, and Commissioner Smith.
I would like to interrupt you right there. I was the only one that said that.
About the donation?
Mm-hmm.
Well, maybe we can get a comment from the others, too. I listened to Friendly Fire last night, and one of the candidates mentioned that they were going to accept any compensation either. So it has become a quasi-political issue. And my question with, since you have said that you were going to donate it, are you voluntarily going to tell us who you're giving it to?
No.
And the reason?
Who I donate money to and who my family donates money to is my own business.
Okay. What about Commissioner Larson? Or did you make any comments about that when you were...
I, if I did, I don't remember, but I do remember thinking that the current commission's salary was exorbitant, and so I was in favor of reducing the Commissioner's salary, which is exactly what happened.
Okay. Well, thank you. And Mr. Smith, what was your comment about that?
I think I made the motion that we make a thousand-dollar figure for the three that were coming on.
You didn't make any comment about the donation or anything like that? So...
Do you have a point of this? This isn't a press conference. This is a citizens' forum. Do you have a point to make?
Since this has become a political issue, I've just seen if the current commission would like to share this information with the public. And it seems important to let the public know about these issues.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to mention that we've put in the budget, the money, to the next commission that comes on can make a decision on what their pay will be. And I think until you've been on here, you don't really realize the responsibility and the time you put in. And when you're just out there trying to get votes, you can feel anything. But one of the things that, when they talked about that, I heard that on the radio, too, they don't realize that we are, when there's a lawsuit, they don't sue Rita or our counselor. They, we're the five right here that get sued. We are, we have lawsuits. And if we've done something wrong, we're responsible. So not only you take on a responsibility, there's a lot more responsibility than, until you get in here and see what it is, you'll never, you'll never know. And I think our Commissioners are underpaid, and I know they've earned their money.
Well, I believe it's...
And I think you believe that, too.
I believe it's, all the Commissioners should receive equal pay to make exceptions for one gets this amount and one gets the other. I think that is, it shows a bad example. And it should be, everyone gets paid for doing the same job.
Well, I'd like to mention also that Governor Brownback, when he appointed these people, that was one of his questions, will you take a reduction in pay? And if you wanted the job, you better have said yes. Randy said no, and he was flat told you'll have to take a reduction in pay.
Well, and if I can, if I can say something to that effect, I was not asked that question.
Neither was I.
Yeah, I was not asked that question by the Governor.
Well, thank you for your comments about that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I just, you know, but I'd like to say that as a drive-for-five, we've done really well the last year and a half, and we've really settled some good issues, and we've really worked together well. And it's been a good, been a good commission last year and a half.
Well, you're all doing the same job. You should be paid the same. That's just common sense.
Well, that's, and that'll probably, that'll be next year. It'll be that way.
The next commission will settle that.
Yep.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Karen Shade, one-one-one, Wisconsin. If I understood correctly, Rita has finished the budget projections for 2017, and the budget is looking to be about forty-two million seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars or something. And that includes lowering the mill levy, which would amount to about five hundred and sixty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. And what I've been curious about is what does this mean in terms of local, the county employees? The commission approved an Archer salary survey, which came back and showed that, on average, our county Commissioners, or, excuse me, our county employees earn about a dollar thirty-three per hour less than peer employees. And my understanding was that thirty-seven cents had been offered to the bargaining unit, and I'm wondering, is that where that is still left at? Or, because the public might want to comment or be aware of these aspects of the budget.
That's where it is, in the draft form we've got today.
Okay, so we're still at that thirty-seven cents. Yeah, if I were an employee and I knew I was making close to less than a dollar an hour than my peers with the full level of responsibilities, I'd be feeling rather frustrated and sad. It's, they put a lot into their jobs, and to not be compensated fairly, I'm thinking, wow, that's two thousand dollars a year. Would that enable me to get the dental work I need, or my kids to have braces, or would it let me have a health club membership, or, you know, people in those wages have lots of bills and lots of opportunities where a couple thousand dollars makes a big difference. And I know this commission approved a raise, or a significant increase last year and in previous years, but still, over the course of about ten years, things have gotten way off track by the tune of about a dollar thirty-three an hour. And I would just ask that you consider making that right. I think, in my, in my opinion, that's more important than decreasing the mill levy, but I don't have the vote like you all have, have earned a vote. I also want to raise a concern that, and I talked to the sheriff and undersheriff afterwards, their budget, I'm glad to hear the discussion about whether their budget is adequate or not, but what they said, and I have long suspicion, they start the process hearing that they need to start writing their budget based on what they spent the previous year. And that is nowhere adequate with the increasing censuses and things like that. I would highly encourage more dialogue, because what I saw today was good. More dialogue would be better, because I don't hear resolution. I don't hear a common understanding. And I think the public also might need to know, I had hoped when Jason, I saw Jason Tiller, the Health Department Director's name, appear on the agenda, I hoped he was going to come before you and ask for a health educator, because we have upstanding concerns about where this source of lead is coming from, and we don't know how big the problem is and things like that. Instead, I learned that the goal is to, there's a position vacancy for a home health coordinator, and there's some discussion about, do we need that agency? Or that aspect of the Health Department. And these are really important things that are being considered, and I want to mention, I just appreciate this forum, to be able to mention it, and I would really highly encourage citizens to get involved, because I think the priorities need to be paying our staff and making sure there are no budget surprises with the jail to the degree that that can be materialized and that we keep our public safe.
All right. Thank you very much.
Hey Karen, did you ever look at the Archer study?
I have looked at a couple versions. I'm not so sure I've seen the complete version.
Do you know who was studied? Was there any private industries around our area that was included in that study? Are making, people in, right in our community, I'd say that some of them are making twenty-five percent more, working for the county, plus much better benefits.
Absolutely, and benefits.
Your benefits are not included in that study, and our benefits are significantly higher than the typical employer.
Well, I appreciate that clarification, because with it, I can go back and look at it again more closely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Norman Mattens, Salina, Kansas. At the last city-county building meeting, we didn't hear much discussion on...
A little bit louder.
At the last city-county building meeting, I never heard any costs being done or studied done on what it's going to cost to secure the entire building. Is there any been discussion among the county Commissioners? Has anybody studied anywhere, contacted another county? Reno County discussed this here in the past. So I'm just curious, when you have the next city-county building meeting, is any figure going to be brought up?
Yeah, I would see that that... Gone. We'll have to look at all those options. I think this commission talked two weeks ago about maybe heading another way and not securing it and just allowing, you know, firearms in here. But we have not taken any other formal action, and I would, I would just encourage you to be at that next meeting and bring up this point.
And I'm not on that board anymore. Jim's not on it, so it's not our decision here.
No, it's not a decision here.
Well, you know, we appreciate what you think, and so we wouldn't do anything unilaterally without talking to you all. But I just think it's part of the conversation, and if you'll come to the next meeting, we'll continue to bring that up.
It will be part of this commission's decision, because you're the one that's going to be spending the money with, in combination with...
In combination.
Say in it, how much...
Oh, definitely. We're three of the seven members.
This, it needs to be discussed, and how long is this, have you got any projected time limit you're going to do this? You're going to drag it out?
It's got, well, again, again, the conversation just started at the last meeting. We have taken a stance since then. We'll take that stance back next, next meeting, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I want to know.
You betcha.
Where it was, because Reno County says it's going to cost them over three hundred thousand.
Right. Okay, thank you.
It'd cost us a million, probably.
Commissioner, I believe, if I'm not wrong, that Brandon Ruckin is in the audience, which is the gentleman that we thought would be here at ten-thirty, and I don't know if this would be a good time in open forum for him to talk to you or not.
Maybe upstairs after.
Or if you want to do it afterwards, but I think we would do it, okay?
Anyone else would like to come forward in the open forum?
Greg Stevens, eight forty-two South Tenth. And I have a couple of things I want to comment on, and Karen has kind of spoke to them. The first is related to the Health Department and health education. You know, we have Zika, we have lead, we have STDs, and it seems like might be time to start thinking about trying to tamp down what's going to happen in the community if we don't have some sort of health education out there, or the Health Department having a stronger presence. And there will probably be more things coming down the pike. But those issues really need to have, the question raised, is it time to consider some sort of a part-time or full-time position for a health education educator? So I throw that out for you to think about. And second, this idea about pay, it kind of concerns me as a management teacher. You know, there's a lot of old sayings about how employees react or feel about pay. Salina has a reputation for being a low-wage community. We used to recruit based on low wages. I think it's caught, I've said this before here, but I think it's caught up with us. And now I think we're trying to raise the possibility that we might be able to create some higher-paying jobs. But, you know, my students, they, they hear this. And the idea that we're lagging behind paying our employees, you know, this is something we can do as citizens and as citizen leaders, is we can, we can try to attract people to move here, rather than the idea of, you know, to make more, you have to move. And I do hear that. And also, wages improve economic activity. There'll be more people having pizza, blue sky, if wages go up.
Now, don't tie that to my business. I...
Well, that's kind of what it is. Well, it's true.
I understand that.
There is this turnover factor.
Yep.
And...
The multiplier effect.
The multiplier effect. And I think the multiplier effect is hurting us, because we have a lot of low-wage jobs in town. The Piketty Report that came out a couple years ago claims that that's why our recession is holding on for so long, is we have this disparity of wages, and the people on the low end don't have the money to prime the pump, so to speak. So it's this multiplier effect, and we can do something about it here. The Archer survey that you guys referenced did include the Chamber Commerce and the Kansas market wage rate, and that's about the best way you can try to find out what private sector is paying, because a lot of the private sector won't willingly, or they don't have ways to plug in. So they have done what they could do. And if you look at the Chamber Commerce's survey, of which most employers don't participate in, it's a small number that do participate, the wages that we do give are pretty low. So it's confirmed there as well. And so I guess what I'm saying is, we might have an opportunity to do a little bit better than throw peanuts out to employees.
All right.
Do a little bit better than thirty, forty cents. And it's a way to say thank you. You always get a lot more out of employees when you treat them better. So that's my comment.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good day, Commissioners. David Nichols, three thirty-three West Beloit. After hearing a couple of the presenters come up and mention they think that we should have a health education at the Health Department, I believe that's a really good thing that you should be considering. Based on some of the things that have happened in the community in the last few months, STDs is kind of almost unfathomable that in this day and age, we still have a problem with that. I remember as an adolescent not knowing anything about STDs. The only thing you knew about it... We were given thorough classes on STDs and how to prevent them and how to treat them. And in this day and age, to think that abstinence is a viable option to preventing STDs is, you know, that's just not even imaginable to me. We need to educate everyone, students and parents, for that matter.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should that be in the school?
Should it be in the school?
Yeah.
If I were a school superintendent, supervisor, principal, I think I would try to come up with a plan to do that, because kids are in school, right? And they should have qualified professionals telling them what STDs are, because they're a fact of life.
I'm seventy-two years old, and that's where I learned it.
In school?
Yeah.
From, from a class or from other kids?
Yeah, health class.
We didn't have those kind of classes when I was in school.
See, the thing is, maybe we're not educating like we used to.
Maybe not.
All right. Thank you very much for your comment.
Good thought.
Abstinence is the only foolproof way.
What's that?
Abstinence is the only foolproof way.
Yeah.
All right, seeing nobody else come forward at this time, I'll move on to regular business.
Eight oh four West Iron. Bless your hearts for everything you do. Working for the public is very difficult. I understand that firsthand. But my, just comment or concern would be, not to repeat any of the comments upstairs, but is the opportunity cost of not having a work release program weigh heavy enough on your hearts to impose that disposition on the new sheriff going forward? Is that something that you feel would be adequate?
I think, I think there's some comments made by some Commissioners that that might be the proper way to go, but that's still the role of the sheriff to decide that.
Okay.
He still has that authority. He has that authority. So I would, I would, if that's something that you really think is important, I would make sure you contact him.
Is he, is that a hundred percent his, or does he have any type of influence from you guys at all? I don't know. I'm just asking. I apologize.
Well, no, that's fine. That's a good question. We would hope that we would have some influence. I don't know whether we do or not in this case.
I don't know that the law allows us.
So...
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think your point's well taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bless you guys.
Now, seeing nobody else come forward, move on to regular business. Item number one.
Approval of agenda for the public forum today.
Mr. Chairman, I may that we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for July fifth, twenty sixteen.
Mr. Chair, I may we accept the county commission minutes of July fifth, two thousand and sixteen as presented.
My second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Item number three.
This is RFA one seventy-five dash sixteen. It's Emergency Management Preparedness Grant and have staff report by Hannah Stanball, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request for action that was, you were briefed on last week, a request for action to apply for and if awarded, accept the two thousand and sixteen Emergency Management Performance Grant. This grant is used to enhance and sustain our emergency management program through staff. It is a fifty-fifty match requirement, and we utilize this through the department's regular operating budget. We do recommend approval of this. We've accepted this grant for many, many, many years. And it should be consistent with the previous award amounts. Last year, we received just a little over thirty-one thousand, and it does help to fund and maintain our deputy director position.
That's a quick report. Good. And we talked about this last week, too. So just so the public knows that we have talked about this. Any further questions at this time?
And we do this every year. It's just a...
Yep.
Right. Very good. Any public comment? Bring back the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I may that we apply for the for and if aware, accepted by two thousand and sixteen Emergency Management Preparedness Grant, which is used to sustain emergency management, RFA one seventy-five point sixteen.
My second.
It's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Is there any other business that needs to come up with the commission at this time?
If I may add, with the partnership that was signed yesterday between Kansas Wesleyan University and Kansas State Polytechnic, I am sure that Hannah is like doing a happy dance, because that is just opening up a whole new, what do I want to say, opportunities for people pursuing higher education. And after they graduate, that is just probably music to your ears. Would you like to comment just briefly on that?
Well, I will tell you that both myself and my deputy director, Bernie Botson, were there yesterday. We were invited. We've been involved with Kansas Wesleyan's program and emergency management since the inception of it. And we were very, very, very excited to hear the merging of the two universities and developing a really, I would say it's probably the best marriage of degree, majors and minors that you could possibly think of, other than maybe mass communications. We are very, very excited about it. It's a great opportunity. We're looking forward to the opportunity to work with some interns, to work with the folks with the UAS program, as well as continued work with the emergency management program, to show them, you know, some of the real-life applications. It's, we're really excited about it. You're right, happy dances all the way.
Yeah, we're excited for you. I'm excited for you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Are you on announcements?
Absolutely, sir.
I want to announce the KKO A Lead Sled Car Show that's going to be in Salina for the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth. Is it, is that right, Ray? Or does it go to the thirty-first?
I think it's just three days.
It's four days.
It's a four-day event this year.
It's a four-day event. And then they have a, they have a deal at the Stiefel. I, that's Friday night.
They're also using the four-H building in Kenwood Hall.
And they're using the four-H in the Kenwood Hall.
Aren't they having a dance also somewhere? Aren't they having a dance over there, too?
Yeah, they're going to have something at the four-H hall. That's not been advertised yet.
It's a marketplace.
A marketplace. They're going to, yeah.
Kind of like a vintage marketplace at the four-H in Kenwood Hall.
And that was, that was nice of Jerry to put that together and lease the buildings from us for an add-on. It's an added-on compared to what they've done. When you have twenty, well, they had twenty-four hundred cars here last year. If we took every car and we had a few people in the motels, why, that looks like a big dollar for turning the wheels of Salina. Thank you.
The only other thing I asked our chair if I could report, because it's kind of important, and I know that we have a lot of people watching us at home, and everybody's been keeping up with the road and bridge progress. We did approve upstairs earlier this morning to continue with the repairs with road and bridge, and we approved MTS contracting block repair in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to continue the work there, which will work nicely with Riley Construction, who is putting in two doors at a total amount of about seven thousand, just a hair over seven thousand dollars. So the work is proceeding accordingly at Road and Bridge, and then next week, I believe, on the agenda, you'll see that there is more, more progress to come.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
That was in the travel building, too, though.
I have a quote from one of our founding fathers, Samuel Adams. "The rights of the colonists as Christians may best be understood by reading and carefully studying the institutes of the great lawgiver and head of the Christian church, which are to be found clearly written and promulgated in the New Testament." Samuel Adams.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. I, please, go ahead. Well, can you come up?
Come to the microphone, Judy.
Judy, can you come to the microphone?
Judy, come to the microphone. That's very important, too.
Judy, that is very important, and I appreciate, I'm sorry to have forgotten.
Kate Crawford, Salina Mayor and City Commissioner, lost her husband Saturday. The wake is this between, I think it's four to eight this afternoon. You might need to check on that. But the funeral's tomorrow morning at ten. And I don't even remember what church. Saint Mary's. Okay, good. Thank you. So...
Our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family, and thank you for bringing that up. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. And I would like to just mention that we will have short meeting number three upstairs that will convene in a couple minutes. And I would like to, uh, just mention that we will have a short meeting, number three upstairs, that will convene in a couple minutes.